All the rest is something about charity. Oh, we love that all. And all of us. We're all together. Something's up there. We shall check. Oh, dear Lord. It's that long, long day. Let it go, son. It's all a shame. When to be down? Say, let's change the song. Oh, all the rest is being our song. It's our red star. Still in our heart. Here comes our dream. The wedding sun, the witch and wolf in the green. Shall always be on our lonely journey. We shall live life. It's time for the song to hear. And to the cross, still on the stairs. When we are born, it's all one's own lives to be. We shall remember what goes to God and divine. There's a lot of trouble. They've been brought close to the young star. All things will be. It's gonna matter. Oh, the rose and. It's one of the things that we fall. Guide all the blue. And let's be all straight. Be all straight. To hear the music, my song. To hear I know. To the long, long day. Let all the rules. To start with, let's all stand. To make this sky. The light of righteousness.
The rising sun, we love and dread. We have an anguish for any means. Oh, hail be your throne. God bless be your throne. You, we draw. The day to see. Oh, hail be your throne. God bless be your throne. We have been much triumphant. From all our foes. Through the crucible unscathed. We passed victorious. Our trumpets sing. The glorious song. Hail be your throne. Oh, hail be your throne. We shall always remember. All that perfect. In the struggles, all those freedom. Oh, hail our heroes. Our precious people. Oh, day and night. So, let all the days. Be your throne. All the things together. So, the times. Oh, thank you. So, all the things.
Thank you, thank you. You're welcome to. When we observe a minute's silence to the fallen heroes of Biafra, the time starts now. May the souls of our heroes and heroines, our babies, women and children, and everyone that have paid the price of Biafran liberation and freedom, rest in peace. While we continue to fight on to see that we get total liberation and restoration of our motherland, you say, you say, you say. Welcome to Odomegu State. And we are here. To see what Odomegu people have for the Biafran government. Honorable moderator, over to you, sir. You have been my thank you. On media side, we can't hear you. My season. Okay, sorry. I'm just talking to myself. Item number one, opening prayer by Ayolchuk. Yes. Are you late? Yes, yes, yes. Are you late? Maybe having some difficulty. Adazion. Are you, you know, take over?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Ayotchuk, okay.
I look on the. Yeah.
No, no.
When is, it's no more opening prayer by Moa.
Yes. Oh, what I said, you send that again. No. Line is questioning me and my now. And what the here so he takes you over.
Okay, I'm not aware. Okay, we move. Now, to Thomas. Opening prayer. But I could come by my. Is that a basic arrow go? What I can't see, I can't see. Did can declare it. Oh, my work, but who will know about it? Tata, who was on my June? But she was, but she is not on my June. Ever I wonder, when they buy one day. Odomegu state, the water. When I am a matter, our acting prime minister. Never know, I know, Odomegu state. So, you know why I didn't care when I yoga. He been on your eye. Cause you men, men, can't get me today. Come with a poro. When you want, when I yoga. Can I pray? And this year, our leader, my Zenanda, can. Our prime minister, Simon Eba. So, you know why, no, you never find a name, but final now. Wow, who may make up the sea figure. I were, were, oh, my Biafra Nila. Oh, my, my, Anji Nila. When I had an act. When you want, I check who I have. But wow, who may. When I go again. You know, you know, my Biafra, I didn't have any donation. Didn't even make any money, did you, or? When you want, when I yoga, when I can, I can, no, my nation, I know my Biafra. You know, I can, I know, you see, I could come and put him here, you know. He said, he said, he said, thank you.
Thank you very much, my brother. And item number two. Is your plain remark by our able state admin. My, you could see.
No, please, you should co-host, Ossisioma, please.
Yeah, co-host him. It seems like, yeah, he co-host him before. It's like, you know, first out. Thank you. Yeah, now he's back. As you see, Omar, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm not hearing that, but. My, you see, Omar, are you state admin, state admin, where are you for your opening?
Yes, there is town there, but. Co-host him again.
Wait, network came out again. Wait, he will come back again. Yeah, his network is really bad. Yeah, let's go to the next item before he returns. Before he returns, the network will be fine. Moderator, check your program and go to the next item. Okay, next item is presentation of color by Chukwuejoke, which is deputy admin Pakistan.
I'm happy to talk Monday, I'm going to make it.
Uh. Loud and clear, loud and clear.
Okay. Because I am a lover, on behalf of Odomegu State. I am another part of our. APM. Acting Prime Minister. And his interage, his cabinet. You got only one minute, when the match, I mean, this is. This my, you just watch. But I think my camera. Uh, hey, only. I want to turn my camera upside down, but I think. It's not happening. Okay. Right. Okay, okay. Okay, I'm going to move to later. I put my body. I put my foot.
Yes, 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 yes.
Uh-huh. Hey, man, uh, please, you both. We were all.
Minister Jare, please co-host me on the other divide.
Am I coming up clear?
Yes, you can hear you.
Okay. So, my angle could watch it. Can't you, I'm not about to order you. On behalf of Odomegu State. I am not here, when I am about to our APM. Acting Prime Minister. And his cabinet. And the woman I am in the Biafra, Buruburu. Uh, I am the. I'll tell you that. Yeah, I do. You know, for example, you are what I do. If anyone knows, you don't know what you need. You could care about it. I could care over. On a new book, I got the other one. I did you give them my, I know what you know, yeah. Oh, maybe Odomegu State, you ought to know about you, get that. When I am about to our APM and his cabinet. And the woman I, you go, Baraburuburu, come up Biafra. I am a soon enough, you don't know what you see. I could tell you what. I have to carry the little button, get that. I could hear your pocket. You and the chair, our ancestors. Your president, Keta. Yeah, I love you, Amara. I love you, though. I love you, Hunani. I love that, Amiri. Oh, gee, guys, you know, but you can get that. Odomegu, when I, I'm about to, I'm on night. Why you assume I'd add it, oh, my Biafra, Nila, Buruburu, Ma. They para APM and his cabinet, Ma, you don't get the cut, I know, but you can get that. I am sure, I'm sure, you can, no, but you can get that. Now, who do they do, I know, yeah, Kaya, Ma. I could tell you what, you don't know, I don't know, I know, I know, but you can get that. She doesn't care, but you don't know, do you? As I am a pocket. As I am, I go, I'm going to my demo, or then, I am a pocket, when I can, I do, when I assume, no, but you can get that, get that, I, I, I. Yeah, but yeah, I, I, no, but you can get that. I could tell you, 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 I could tell you. Oh, no, the. Odomegu State, I know, but you can get that. Come, I'm ready, you are, you know, but you can get that. I'm ready, I can't do, I'm ready, I can't do, I know, but you can get that, no, though. Or whether, when, though. I could tell you what, I assume, I know, but you can get that. When I talk, you don't, you don't know, you go to do, you go, oh, I don't know, I mean, oh, my, oh, my, I'm not. It's not, I don't know, I don't know, I, 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 I. In the fight of freedom, I am a pocket, no, but you can get that, when I assume, I'm a pocket, I, I. I'm a pocket, I, I, no, but you can get that. I could tell you what, I know, I can, I do. When I sit, I get. Can't you, I know, but you can get that. Oh, you, 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 oh, Biafra, I know, but you can get that. Odomegu, I know, but you can get that, when you could go, when you see my Biafra. When I say, I'm going to, I know, so. Waena asidu na wura wai kaya naso. Na wura wa, ayende nte na dena dehanya. Abu freedom, injana nukibina, owa zinna mode kano, ayana yado lo baxin ketata. Ezebe gube, dingod, dingozwa, gube kwa kara wurugoka. Odaanipre, tiya ezo pataana akandoto, akande, nde eko, nde sune omu kipada hanemwe kavuto. Ezebe gube, dingozwa, ayana asidina. Eba sune wurugoka na. Nma esu na, na, na ta noru gombwe, omo, oku diana bago nafoya. Nnele go, mbono biyafra, nje tju weyemwehe wai. Ezebe gube, dingozwa, ayana yado lo baxin ketata. Eba, nye kwa wurugoka aburu nte gaadu nahe bo na mode kano. Koi jua nwaaye, na dena dehanya. O, wesu nishoro, gube kwa kara korwo. Eteke wurugoka omu azisa, moletawa, framoletta, moke kawaane, muangse na kwe, ezubomado. Ogaade dehana mo. Ega pata, ose na, ogena dehanya, ayana kia lopa. Yoko awo, waipoku, kuadi si jone. Nikosu na, sana yene ruha bonya je, nikana hagwe. Ezebe gube, dingozwa, ayana yado lo baxin ketata. Ya baayume. Chokobemo biyafra nje, nne gubu, rebo rebo, oye no. Waena apanpo, odesu waedere biyafra, namaka esu weyemwehe wai. Meri gaabu ukayeneke, meri gaadikunukaayeneke, meri gaabu ukayeneke, meri gaabu ukayeneke. Asitwa. Aha na, 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 obo to tata, ose. Meri kaya gene, o, lo baxin ketata, waena ruche. Ana ma, ejeje, ejeje, dingozwa. Nande cabinet, nje injana bambo, our media, everybody, our APM, ayene wote nede lo baxin ketata. Waena asidida, chokobemo wurugoka. Ozo lozo abu nage, obu, jogabu kunda. Ni ayana no good news. Nande cabinet, nje, na, woera wuzdam. Amamehe, wachwa hamwa, nikage jine edwai. Waena watapoye kaya naso. Ogena dehanya, ezebe gube, ayunchari nne gana kana na biyafra. Waze tete, na yomo jine raya, weyemwehe freedoma, put off freedom. Gaade raya na, asitwa kabiama. Nande nu, nanda. Isae, 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 isae. I hope I'm coming, I'm coming clear.
Isae. Very powerful, ve- very powerful.
Ah, di kan na, waena.
Isae, isae.
Nakonwa, oja eka pa ri se.
Ama ka, ama ka.
Oh, baba re. Oh, baba re. Viko, apa mo bo ma ge tuku ge, kokeke. Pakistan admin. Eh, na apa nda odimegu state. Anamajee, nine hundred and nineteen thousand aj. Plus fifty ajema, waena waraji. Nine hundred odimegu state. Waena zikuwa era, waena asit, non. Omu biyafra nje, oka cha, our APM and his entourage, his cabinet. And my, ayana asinu na, on behalf of odimegu state. Nde wa nne omu chinake.
They were, they were my dear brother.
Nakonwa, oja, wa, weyemwehe nne gubu, eba. Ayewa, ayewa, muntse odimegu. Nde wa nne omu chinake. Aga barane, nchali nne.
Aga baranele. Now is it time. There were, thank you very much. Um, I think, uh, our state admin. Is in now, maybe he can do the. Hey, Soni?
State admin, ready?
What is your name?
Okay, Minister Jare, pick him up. This is my co-host.
He lost it, so he need to.
Sorry, I, I have an issue with my net talk. Um, sorry for that. Let me start afresh. Welcome address by SA, Odamegu State. Good evening, Federal Biyafra. Good evening, Prince of Biyafra. Good evening, lips and admins. Good evening, Acting Prime Minister, Honorable Odeshku Nkere. Good evening, all the host of Biyafra Republic Government in exile and Biyafra Defacto Government in homeland. Let me start by appreciating our Supreme Leader, His Excellency, Maasi Nandikanu. He has done marvellously well in bringing us to right by making us to understand the need to exit the terrorist state called Nigeria. And to our Prime Minister, His Excellency, Maasi Simon Eba. I say thank you for your sacrifices and for building upon the, upon that foundation which our Supreme Leader, Maasi Nandikanu, has laid down. The freedom of Biyafra has been your ultimate pleasure, Ohamadike and Obato Biyawan of Biyafra. We pray to Chuku Okike for you to regain your respective freedoms and for the actual restoration of the sovereignty. And for the actual restoration of the Biyafra sovereignty. Isae. Our CRC Shaman, Honorable Imam Madabum. Thank you for your effort and commitment to the Biyafra liberation. Through your hard office, to our APM, Honorable Odeshku Nkere. We are grateful because you have really become our bishop and evangelist as well. In the absence of our Supreme Leader, Maasi Nandikanu and our Prime Minister, Maasi Simon Eba. You are building and pursuing the total freedom of Biyafra people in the same steps and foundation laid down by our leader and Prime Minister. It is with great joy and honor that the good people of Odamegu State welcomes you all to this memorable town hall meeting. This is our first town hall meeting with APM, Honorable Nkere. It is very unfortunate that since after the Biyafra Convention in Latvia, Finland, November twenty, November twenty ninth to December third, twenty twenty fourth. Odamegu State has experienced a lot of setback as a result of Ngosi Orobofulani's betrayal. Ngosi Orobofulani is an Indian of Odamegu State. She started destroying the Biyafra liberation from the class roots, gradually making sure that Odamegu State does not enjoy any form of peace, unity and progress. She is a gray snake under green grass, walking tirelessly with her lawyerist to destroy any meaningful efforts by our state. They remove anyone who speaks the truth from our state WhatsApp group. She sees acting of sensible questions by Biyafra as a threat to her evil agenda. Little do we know that Orobofulani does not believe in Biyafra, in Biyafra freedom. She colludes with this whole terrorist state to kill Biyafra. But because we are here, she has failed and will continue to fail till she and her sabot, sabotage group disappears completely into oblivion like the, the defunct DOS. Today, the good people of Odamegu State have come to make their stand very clear that Odamegu State stands with Bridge for the real liberation of Biyafra land. We therefore call on all well-meaning Odamegu State Indians to join hands together and support Bridge for the real liberation of Biyafra proposed and declared to be called United States of Biyafra. In conclusion, we recognize the Biyafra Defense Forces, the Commander in Chief, Iwebutuzo, and his guardsmen. We are extremely happy for having you all fighting with us for the Biyafra rebre, for the Biyafra freedom. Long live Ohamadike one of Biyafra. Maasi Nandikanu. Long live Obato Biyawan of Biyafra. Maasi Simon Eba. Long live Biyafra Defense Forces. Long live the forty United States of Biyafra. I thank everyone who have endeavored to be in this town hall meeting today. May Chuku Okike bless and keep you all. Isae, 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 nde wa nne omu chinake.
Thank you very much, my Sae.
There were, there were. Minister Jare, please, co-host, PK Chuku CV, in a lot of, co-hosts.
Okay, thank you very much, my Sae. He did a very, this is very powerful message. It shows that we are still one, we still do the matter. Now it's time for.
Maasi Sae, Maasi Sae.
Yes.
Maasi Sae, have you broken cola?
Have I?
Have you done breaking of cola nut?
Isae, um, you finished breaking it. Okay, I'm picking, I'm picking cola with fifty ajema on my side.
Thank you, thank you. So let's open the floor for those that wants to test the cola nut of Odamegu.
That's what I wanted to say.
And the, the cola nut in, oh, where is state is not the same cola nut in, or low states. And the one in Odamegu is not the same as the one in Etayana. So let's test the cola nut of Odamegu and see how it goes. We have experience, experience, over to you, sir.
Yes, and, you know, to go on, on this, you know, we have cola nuts, we have, um, angara, like some collected. And we have, of course, of which people we used to, you know, mix it.
Okay, thank you so much, good evening, good afternoon, good morning, depend your time zone. I give you to my APM, I'm listen informations, other protocols observed. It's my great opportunity to be in the midst of Odamegu for the, a great work they are doing. Today is a great day, they have displayed that, yes, they are capable to move the mountain. And they always said, the journey of a man started by one step, and they have make a step by organizing this great, wonderful visit of APM. On behalf of Abonias, I am the admin of Abonia, on behalf of Abonia, we are taking the cola nut in the sum of five thousand AJ. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you very much. I'd like to remind everyone, those who, you know, maybe because I wanted a daughter, you don't like cola. You know, have, we have angara, we have, of course, you know, aligeta paper and everything, so you can choose. Even, even unkobi and, and ko, you can take it as, as a cola. So let's keep raising hand and, and do. Raise hand and answer your father's name. Thank you.
Good numbers, Zani, so, good number, over to you.
Odamegu Pweni, Odamegu Pweni, Odamegu Pweni, Odamegu Pweni.
Ah.
Yeah.
Odamegu.
Dalun, 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 dalun. Thank you. The, they made the speech and the prayer, I grow for. Ogwa waka, ezuboto wa fibo kevo, dalun neo, neo ni, dalun nne Odamegu wankode namba nefu. Um, um, owa epu makal, gozi ofu, dalun matu abu waka. Uh, isla obindijin, obu indijin kobo, nobo just biya, amonireba manam, indijin nobo because la monireba manam, ayegemi uproot. We are going to uproot her out of her land, she's not a neighbor from, uh-huh, she came to destroy. And I, I thank you for kabiama that, I almost given that woman address of my family, when I wanted to do something, I contacted her. Almost give back, and I thank you for that, I think you had that address. Because when I, when this thing happened, I began to question how she blocked me. You know, I've used that opportunity to do her evil. Um, she's, she came to destroy, she's a fullani woman, alimata bubaka, the butterfly that call herself bird, the ukopian. Uh-huh. Every evil before her, she came to destroy our land. The land that I gave, that, 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 they born you, the land that bred you and raised you up, what you will give back to the land is to share the blood of the innocent people of the land to betray the land. She will never have peace. So also anybody who is backing her evil. Thank you, Odamegu State, thank you, um, APM, and your entourage, thank you for coming to Odamegu. Odamegu is a very beautiful state where we have a very different tourist area. Thank you so much. Uh-huh. I will, on behalf of my family and the Uli County, I am taking cola nut with fifty thousand AJ. And right now, we're sending him receipt to, Honorable Minister for Information, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much, my brother, I call the number.
Under, please.
Maasi Sae, you have many hand trouble.
Yes, yes, yes. I have, I have to thank you before, before I go to the next one. So, Pastor Paul, over to you, let's do the missful. Pastor Paul, you cannot mut yourself. Yes, 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 we are hearing you, we are hearing you, go on. Yeah, you, you mut yourself, you mut yourself again. Okay, now, go on.
I want to thank God for what move we teach for every step they have taken is knowledge. But I thank God that God has given them the victory to conquer their enemy. Uh, I want to, on behalf of Anoma State, I want to welcome our Atakunadu APM with five thousand AJ. I still welcome to the stage, the people of Anoma, John Odamegu, D'Chesha, you are welcome. God bless you, sir. God bless you.
There were, there were.
There were, there were, there were.
Um.
Yeah, I want to know, I want, I want that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Ah, Angoleka, Angoleka Nest, Angoleka, ya, you cannot mut yourself.
Good evening, great Biyafra. You people, I welcome everybody. I welcome our APM for the great job that he's doing. I welcome all the Brig for all their efforts. I welcome all Biyafra that are here to participate in our fundraising today. Um, Odamegu State is a great state. And the people that donated money, I want to bring update from Odamegu State for this event. So, uh, we have Maasi Chinadum Victor. He paid thirty thousand AJ. We have Odenaka Ibe. Four thousand AJ. We have Maasi Ikechukun fifty thousand AJ. Mada Angoleka, five thousand AJ. Maasi Cipren, five thousand AJ. Maasi Chukue Meka. Hundred thousand AJ. Uh, hundred thousand AJ for welcoming our APM. And the fifty thousand AJ for picking up the cola nut. Maasi HFNA paid thirty thousand AJ and thirty thousand BLT. Pastor Linus paid five thousand AJ. Um, Maasi, our honorable CRC, Maasi Imam Madabum. Paid two hundred AJ, two hundred thousand AJ. Maasi Ayochukun paid one hundred and fifty thousand AJ. Maasi Esze paid fifty ajema on the website. So, um, we have, uh, should I have people name? Maasi Chukujoke fifty thousand AJ for cola nut. Fifty thousand AJ for welcoming our APM. Maasi Kelvin fifty thousand AJ for cola nut, fifty, thirty, I mean thirty thousand AJ for cola nut and thirty thousand AJ for APM. So the total money that we realize for our this event for cola nut and welcoming our APM is nine hundred and nineteen thousand AJ. Nde won.
Ay, amay coming up?
Loud and clear, there were, thank you very much, thank you very much. I, uh, uh, I, hehe.
Odamegu Pweni. Hey. Odamegu Pweni. Odamegu Pweni. Ubeje nanike. Ubeje nanike. Ubeje nanike. Ubeje nanike. Ay no change me. You have to go, ayade shaky shaky, otako de danger, ogade ma, nde won.
There were.
There were. Oja na hapwa for bruza.
There were. There were, madam, oleka.
Madam. Okay, uh, next, Amaka Allison. Over to you.
Oka, egamadi watava.
I think, nela, nde kanga. Na na, nige.
There were. Loud and clear. Fuma, fuma.
Yeah, viko pledge kangame, um, afuanyo go on the fourteenth, nne boni face ego on fifteenth, okay? Asinu kwa. Obelas, opato belenko. So, I mean, I'm a man, twenty pounds for the, um, I can basket, thank you.
Dalu, 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 mena, mena no.
Madam, yeah.
Uh. Yeah? Okay, next is, uh. Okay.
You have plenty hands, all the hands, you have plenty hands.
Okay, Chief Agansi, I'm mut yourself.
I greet all of us in the name of Chuku Okike Abiyama.
Sir, sir.
I want to welcome all of us. Because there you are is in the central region, which I am the administrator. I supposed to be giving this chance before now. So I welcome all of us in central region, uh, uh, Biyafra land. I want to thank, salute to APM and his co-entourage. I sell of you. God will safeguard and bless you people in the name of Chuku, of Kabiama. For the good job and good work that you are doing. We see everything and we know everything. Um, without wasting much time, uh, I supposed to bless a cola. For the fact it has been blessed. I will take the cola with, on behalf of Alu State, with a sum of ten thousand AJ. Thank you and God bless all of us in the name of Chuku Okike Abiyama. Isae.
Isae, isae. Dalu, dalu.
Dalu.
Dalu, Chief Agansi, Alu State.
Yeah, you were making nae, eh, 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 ibu hoso. Don't be, don't be offended, you know, we all, we all learning, we all learning.
Thank you, thank you.
Next time, next time, next time, we'll try to do it better, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to know if I'm doing, I want to.
Next, okay, next is Kiruka. I'm mut yourself, please.
Kiruka, I'm mut yourself, please.
Yeah, sorry. I'm a bit occupied. Okay, please, I greet the house. Yeah. Hmm, hmm, Chuku Okike, thank you so much for bringing us together to, we come to support Odamegu State. Okay, I don't have much to say except to thank Chuku Kabiama for everything so far, for our PM, for our leader. Okay, so I want to support today with, um, hundred ajema. Please put it down, I'll pay it and forward the receipt to Mr. Bunnyface, please. Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you.
Coco Akka, ah, Coco Akka.
Odmegu Bueno.
Right.
Odmegu Bueno.
Yeah.
Odmegu Kaisweno.
Yeah. Sonny, sonny, play, play that small, that, uh, that music you usually play.
Well, I tell, I can one and a half, I didn't know one.
I know, I know, I know, I know. That is a thank you, thank you message, right? Appreciate your message. Thank you message, thank you message. Oh, you go to next one.
Yeah, continue, go to the next person while we.
Okay, okay, you Frankie. Unmute yourself.
I, I can never. Yes, woman never. APM. Odmegu State, you, you know, the entourage, none, none. I know, I know, but now, uh, I, 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 we have one, you call me, you know, no, no. I would not be, what I'm, because I do come story, nah, ma.
To support A P M. And his a visit to uh his lovely state of Mewu. So um. My dear, you send me your link. So that can make a way I can because that's near where they are. And there's the Admewu link.
Okay, okay.
So in addition, so fifty fifty a gemma from him twenty for cola thirty for support. So uh uh in addition to RJ. Uh I will also um uh on the on behalf of Aludo. I use a thirty uh a gemma to take a color not for Aludo. Uh so that uh you are our good brothers and neighbors. Because it's a amen. So God will continue to bless everyone of you. So um I'll post the fifty thirty a gemma uh altogether. Who will I send you to?
Uh to Amaleka or um um. Uh Adion.
Okay, okay, okay. So what is it? So uh thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Alright, that's okay. Yes.
Okay. Good evening, good morning, good afternoon and good good evening, everyone. Depending on your time zone. Uh. I welcome all the cabinet members. All our wishers. All protocol observed. Uh without wasting much time. I am the secretary of Admewu. My name are Mazi Iketsukun Seve. Yeah. In Admewu State, great Admewu State. We have uh admin, our admin. And also we have our deputy admin. And secretary. Financial secretary. And our P R O stroke media. Also. In Admewu, we have fifteen counties. And. Five districts each. And three wards. Each district. And. Without wasting time. Let me measure the names of the county we have in Admewu State. The county names are. Aguata South. Aguata North. Oko County, Ufuma County. Inkelehi County. Ekusigo. South, Ekusigo North. Osumei, Osumei County. Ochei County, Uli County. Ihiala County, Ebponesi County. Opo County. Neewi County. The last but not the least, Okija County. Uh without wasting time also. I want to just give a small explanation about Admewu. What we like. In Admewu. But you know, Admewu have uh uh some special food. In Admewu State. We have some special food. In Admewu that we call. Ofe. Ofe Onubu and Ofe Aura. And also in Admewu State, we have four market days and each town in Admewu have different markets. That have a K Ore Afor. And each of one of all these markets that each town has. There's a special food that we normally. Eat on that each market. Something like Abacha. Some uh some 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 part of uh Biafra land call it Oban or. Yes. So each market have a special food they normally eat on each market day. And also we have a culture, we have different different if you come to Admewu State, we have. Different different mascots. And in this program, you are going to see one of the mascots. The big, one of the biggest mascots in Biafra land that come from Admewu. Called Ajofian. Naneewi. Each town in Admewu have. Different mascots that that was known of that town. And also, Admewu State is a tourist place and a commercial place. Without wasting time, brothers and sisters. I will stop here because if I continue, we're not going to leave today. But let me stop here. I just measure but few. Thank you and God bless every one of us. Amen. Is it, is it, is it, is it?
Is it, thank you, my eboo secretary. For this short uh. Explanation about Admewu. Have a lot. You know, if you if you continue doing that and reading it, I think uh. Everybody will stay here till till that kingdom come. So uh include the number. Uh your hand is up. So unmute yourself.
Thank you. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Sorry, sorry. Um. Admewu, where is? Admewu, where is? Admewu, where is Zoni?
Ademaya.
Um, that don't read now. Because twenty twenty thousand AJ when you go. Uh honorable minister for information, yes, I've sent you a receipt of a hundred and fifty thousand AJ. Please, um. I'm still spending on from that money, okay? I've sent the receipt already. Uh huh. Uh twenty thousand AJ plus um.
Wait, wait, wait. Include the number. It's a fifty thousand AJ.
Fifty thousand AJ for the first time and this twenty thousand, that is seventy thousand AJ. Now, okay, that's what I already have spent.
AJ, 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 AJ.
It's equivalent to dollar, equivalent to dollar.
AJ, AJ, AJ.
Okay.
Money. Fifty thousand AJ, I'll give it, don't worry. The day is coming.
Yes, you go, you go reach that side with time. Yes.
I'll give it. You see, I want to correct, I want to show something here, bring something out. When our uh first um who speak just now called the 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 name of the counties in Admewu State. Do you know that somebody who said that is from uh from uh from uh Oga don't know her local government? Is that not a red flag that the Moron is not from that soil? And I want you to know that Admewu State in where my country where you have Oduku Banka. You have Uli Airport and you have Wonder River, two rivers that flow together. They don't, they don't accept each other. You know, is found in my county and there are many tourist states. I just want to highlight that. Uh with this, please permit me. This is all of our traditional song. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Include the number.
Thank you.
For this explanation. Thank you. Good number. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Uh.
You have many answer.
Yes, yes, I'm going. Uh Techno Pop five pro. You are next. Unmute yourself. Take the next person while you wait for Techno Pop.
Okay, uh Sten, why Jesus?
Ah, Admewu, where is?
Yeah.
Admewu, where is?
Yeah.
Let me do it two times. Uh I want to thank everybody that is here. The A P M. The information. The administrator of Admewu. And the the central. Uh region administrator. And the Aludo, which is my state. Uh I just want to say. That this is wonderful. But one of the issues is that. If you know or wherever you find something good, invite your brother there. We, like what I always talk about is mobilization. Let people know the right channel. When we are talking of Admewu State. That's how we will channel all these things. You will see it will be very easy to harness people. By the time you come, making sure that all the counties are represented. They have uh then you go to the uh hello. Hello?
Right.
We are hearing you, we are hearing you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
You go ahead.
Majesty Stephen, Majesty Stephen, please, let's keep it short. We don't want to miss any of the hands. Because some people may be at work, they just want to hop in and then finish. So let's keep it structured.
I'm taking it straight already. Now, when everything is arranged that way. You will see that we will get to the grassroots. Why I'm saying this is that that's a state that had a meeting, they called me today. And what they are saying is in disparity to what you are doing, but I have corrected that the way I can. But what I want to say is let us. Go out, reach out to people. If you bring one thousand, I bring one thousand, another person bring one thousand. If we are one million, it is a lot of money. So let us go the rate. God bless you. I will support. I don't know if uh my sister Angoleka has announced it. But I have told her because I was having battery problem. That I'm going to support Admewu with the two thousand AJ. And let it just. That is what. God bless you. Let us walk and see Biafra actualize. God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Majesty Stephen, Majesty Jesus.
Thank you.
Your essence, thank you, thank you. Uh Techno Pop, are you ready to eat a gram running?
Yeah, good evening, Admewu State. Admewu State.
Admewu State. Yeah.
One man, one man, one man, they will, they will, they will. Uh this is Mazi Sipred. I don't know what happened to my phone. My name changed to Techno Pop five. I tried to change it, but it's not changing. Nevertheless, you are all welcome. You are all welcome, you are all welcome. My honorable ministers, you are all welcome. Thank you all for coming. Thank you all for coming to grace this wonderful occasion. Be Chuku Opikabiamma continue to bless each and every one of us. My honorable A P M, you are looking good, you are looking great. Thank you all, the whole admin of Admewu. I thank you for putting this program. It's wonderful. Honorable Minister of Information, I thank you. You are welcome. I would talk to you more time. I'm using a three thousand AJ to welcome my eight years. There you go. Thank you so.
Thank you, thank, thank you very much, my brother. Uh.
He said, how much? How much, please? How much?
Three thousand AJ, three thousand AJ.
Three, three thousand AJ. Okay, uh about two. Oh yeah. Keep, no, unmute yourself.
Yes, uh. Chet, 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 Admewu, where is?
Yeah.
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 Admewu, where is?
Yeah.
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 I seen a, a zuko, kahiri, I thought one giga. I had thought to me, I'm gonna go back to that. Here my first time. In Bia, Admewu meeting. On the obidurunagori today. That I was able to get the, I saw the. Information from our eboo prime min, uh our eboo minister of information. As that, but our prime minister, he's coming out soon. It was in my dream, it was in my dream to be meeting. But that is story for another day. So when I got the information as I woke up this morning, I was, I was very happy. I probably come in. When I come in, it was when our brother was blessing the correct all the notes. So I want to thank everyone. I want to thank uh our A P M, welcome Admewu State. We are peace, loving people. We are wonderful people. We are accommodating. And uh we are hardworking people. When you talk about eh bambo, hustling. Hustling a lot. When we follow, never, never accept to be on the ground and keep pushing and hustling. We are known for that spirit. So you all are welcome. And with the spirit of Chuku Kabiyama, not to bless Admewu State and so many other states, other forty states. That is being issued in. The Biafra government. So in this, at this moment, I use first of all twenty a gemma to. Eighteen twenty a gemma when if you travel A P M Oche, no, I know the today. Just say I can do still very instead of a white area. And there was a thirty a gemma whenever I were all RJ. I can send the receipt in a group via on Telegram. Because you see any common name. When you many go by, you may. The battle is not easy and we must know. Freedom is not something you buy from supermarkets. It is very expensive and costly. So we must not relent. Airborne, 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 all hail Biafra. Thank you all, my brothers.
Ndewa. Hey, Biafra. Thank you very much, my brother.
Thank you very much.
And next, next on the line is Celestin iPhone. Unmute yourself.
Uh good morning, everyone, and good evening and good afternoon, depending on your location. All protocol observed. I'm supporting Admewu State with some of five thousand AJ. Those that we are busy at work, so I don't have much time. I'm supporting Admewu with five thousand AJ. Thank you all. God bless and protect everyone and guide you all.
Thank you, my brother, for this very short. Oh. Listen, you made, oh, it's so good. Uh next one is uh on my pro. I unmute yourself.
Okay, um good evening, everyone. Um. Our eboo A P M. My baby. Okay, Chuku, pass the round of applause on. Our eboo minister of um communication and uh everyone present. I greet you all with the name of um our eboo leader, Admewu, Oduku. Welcome everyone to our honorable state. Uh first of all, I would like to um thank our dear system, Wanda Angoleka, for the wonderful job she's been doing. Ever since the issue we had from last year November. You know, Admewu State used to be one of the best performing states when it comes to these Biafra issues. Especially as constituted under P M. I could remember uh the one of the last uh visit in uh Abatobi did. Admewu happened to be one of the least, prior to his problem. And I remember how we worked tirelessly to make it a memorable one, you know? Uh nonetheless, uh before I move on, I would like to. Remind the previous speaker who mentioned about few things that you could find in Admewu State. He forgot to mention that um Admewu State also is a home to one of the biggest reserves in terms of um natural gas. Between Ihiala and Uli boundary. Admewu State holds the, one of the biggest natural, you can go do your research. When it comes to natural gas, you can find it in Admewu State. And then um about someone who mentioned about counties. Uh in terms of integrating everyone together, remember the issue where we are coming from, the truth is. What happened really caused a lot of problems. And it's a process where we have to gradually integrate many people because. What I can tell you and I want you to, I'm stating it as a fact, that so many people were monetized during the, this whole process. So not everyone is doing what they are doing with their own right conscience. Some of them have eaten money and they are in a situation whereby. They know the truth, but they cannot go, they can, it's, it's too late for them to accept the truth now. So it's a process where we have to gradually rebuild their trust and then be able to integrate them into what we are doing now. Okay, so um. Uh about how, you know. Just a second, um. Okay, I don't want to go further. I would like to support today's program with some of twenty thousand naira. For the beginning, it's my first time getting to, you know, integrate into bridge. I was one of those who are a bit confused in the initial stage. You know, but then as time goes on, like I usually, I used to communicate very well with Adadiyarama. As time goes on, I begin to, you know. Um try to look at things from different perspectives and what has been going on because I'm someone who really wants to work with facts and not just glossips. So from incidents that are going on, people buy resources to um defend their land instead of what is actually needed. And the rest of it, it's obvious that we are not dealing with someone who is honest about her actions. I would also like to refer her as an individual. So from me, from here, welcome everyone to Admewu State. We really hope to make it great again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. God bless you, my brother.
Mazi, that you spoke.
Please, uh, you say how much you said? How much uh Mazi that just spoke, please? How much you said?
Twenty thousand. He, he made the.
Hold on, hold on, I'm asking him. How much you said? Mazi that just spoke.
Can you, can you hear me? Twenty, twenty thousand uh naira. I don't want to make mistake with the AJ and the gemma.
Are you say, are you a Biafra or you a Nigerian?
I am a Biafra, of course.
All right, what is naira? Do we have naira in Biafra land?
Okay, I use the naira just to avoid, you know, making pledges. Uh that I will, you know, imagine saying twenty thousand AJ.
Monaco. What is Biafra Monaco?
AJ, which is equivalent to dollar, right?
Hold on, stop there. If you're a Biafra, whatever you're doing, identify yourself as a Biafra. And you have to pay fine for this. I believe we have our task commission from Admewu, so you, you all know how to handle this. Okay, please. We are Biafrans, proudly one, we are not Nigeria. So anything associated with Nigeria, please. Uh we know, we try the best we can to disassociate ourselves. Thank you.
All right, I think um I'll glad, I'll gladly pay the fine. And I hope not to repeat the mistake again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, uh uh Admepro. Uh in case of necessary, so you don't do mistake. If you don't do, if you don't have a gemma, you say a J. Uh two zero. So if you're, you know. Or you ask question. Thank you for realizing the mistake and uh coming back. Really appreciate it. So next online is uh include the number. Your hand is up again. Unmute yourself.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Admewu, where is? Admewu, where is? Admewu, where is? Admewu, where is?
Have to be, I should be.
Onge. I'm not mad, I'm a little bit more more. A P M, I'm hardly, I don't like to, I, I, I'm not good at giving people air collect, but A P M, I'm not, I just want to say. On your name, I can see, I mean. That can, oh, you may be, in fact, you are too good. I'm telling you, you like you judging ten thousand AJ. We are not support, whenever I put here P M crokita. A P M, it very, very, I'm telling you, we appreciate Chukoki Kabiyama for having people. I'm telling you, Prime Minister, I will be proud of you. Uh, let my God proud, Biafrans are proud of you. Um my brother, I just spoke. You know, I myself here, I know something, I know where it is. But I will not review it for Zoo to go there. In that land, you see everywhere, even everybody here, this process. Okay, what you said, I didn't know it, but I don't want to. You say it, okay? I know a place that I discovered something that I know is very, very important, but only Biafa will know it, not, not Zoo. Okay, that is why we don't do measures such than things, okay? Thank you so much. Welcome.
Ndewa, thank you.
Thank you very much, include the number. Thank you for this your uh advice. I'm really, I really appreciate it. Thank you, thank you. Uh Nenaya Okereki, over to you. Unmute yourself.
Good evening, great Biafrans. All protocol observed. I'm supporting today's event with fifty AJ. Uh I want to ask. Mazi, honorable Sonia Barawa, do I send the receipt to you or do I send it to Wada Angoleka?
Send it to Angoleka for their records. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much for this your shot.
Thank you, Nukwada. Thank you. Ndewa. Oh, one dot, one dot, one dot, Ndewa.
Okay.
I, I, I'm not from Admewu, better be friend, I will my dear land, you are Admewu.
I'm one day I'm awake, one day I'm awake.
Of course.
Ain't nobody not Admewu before now.
No, 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 no. No, I know I'm not Admewu, better, I will, I will my dear, not Admewu, neither I'm on my dial, not so many.
Okay.
Okay.
One day I'm awake, no.
Ah, yeah.
No, 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 my dear.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. Uh next is Victor Ansho. Unmute yourself.
Nah, I can never play more young now, I can never play more though. Nah, all the good, all the good, all the good, all the good. Oh, I J, I see, and then uh, no, the way I can make it. Uh never, uh without wasting much of our time, only one night, what came, no, there are now. Because I said. I will not, uh out of ninety-nine, out of hundred sheep. Oh, my cool food. Cause when you want, you have. For that, you have, 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 see ninety-nine, cause that ninety-nine, you ship a car home. So so food, can I have this confused, you take a try. We end with a try. Our A P M, I try. Eh, but no, no, no. And I, and I'm a sick, I'm a large, come back with your genuine hearts. Everyone I drop, I go with you. Large kind of back, oh. Because of that joy and happiness, I made twenty thousand AJ. I support you, Admewu State, and welcome A P M and each and every one of us. Now, I don't know, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, uh Mazi Victor Ansho. Exactly, we are, we are keeping our arms up, waiting for them to come and join us. Thank you very much. Angoleka, your hand is up. Oyan, do your thing.
Yeah. Nde wono, umu Chukoki Kabiama. In support of what Chukunonso said, this our brother, Chukwe Meka, is his name. He was a vibrant comrade in old Odumogu State. You know, for since all this wild as problem, we keep in touch, many of them. I keep in touch with many of them, many of them. We can do argument, argument, then I will try to let the people know the reality that is facing us. To our surprise, when he sent me a message that, because I sent, I sent this, our jingle to him privately, many of them. He now replied that he will be there. So later, he now asked me to, to add him in the platform, the number he brought, I tried to add him. The number is not going, I still sending the message. So when this occasion rise, I send him the link and he replied to me that he will come. You know, he explained very well because I normally scream them so that I will know who come to investigate what we are doing. But this time around, whether they want to come and investigate or not, we have passed them, we have passed that level. So I am welcome him with the sum of five thousand AJ for today because he really, 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 really tell me his mind that then he was confused. And what is going on here now for us of today? He makes sure that the place he followed before was a mistake to him. Now he now realizes mistakes, so please let us welcome him with our elbow hand. He's a nice person. Thank you very much. Nde won.
Nde won, my dear sister, thank you very much. Exactly, I don't know. It's really good that he realized that where he's going, there's no road. That's, you know. And I have, I hold up, oh, yeah. Thank you very much. We all should encourage him to keep it. So, more hands, more hands, more hands. Okay, Sone. Mazie Sone. Go ahead, go ahead. You have hand up. Okay, 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 okay. Just, just wait. Quote the numbers, hand is up. So let's, let's take it. I wanted to go and take.
Odumogu, Odumogu, Odumogu amaka. Because, please, don't be offended, my fellow Biafrans and Odumoguans. That I am, you, I'm in my home and our APM visited us. So don't be offended that I will be leaving you for that reason, I want to use twenty thousand AJ. Sorry, twenty thousand AJ to, you know, to give our APM water when he will making his speech. Because I won't be here when his speech will be going on. So totally, everything is hundred thousand AJ. And if my chairman minister, I sent you hundred fifty thousand AJ, fifty thousand is a normal pledge. Everything is there, I sent you the receipt already. Please permit, forgive me that I will be leaving now, you come to my place, I'm leaving there. It's imperative, okay? So thank you so much for what you are doing. I appreciate you for everything you are doing. And my fellow youth of Odumogu, please always ask question and don't make decision while you emotional. Please, this is my advice to you. Ask question before you subscribe to anything and ask for evidence. Thank you so much. Thank you. Unquote the number.
Thank you very much.
God bless you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll take item number six. Weapon our APM with Ben. Sone, over to you. Sonia, ready? Yeah. Thank you, thank you very much. Before, Odumogu Pro, your hand is up. Okay, amute yourself. Let's.
Okay, I want to thank Wanda Ngoreka for supporting my return with the sum of five thousand AJ. I really appreciate and I also want to make some correction that I'm not here to do any investigation on behalf of anyone. I only think that you can hide the truth for, for a long time. And the time has actually come whereby you are either in or you are out. You know, so I only want to correct that impression and I also want to add to my previous pledge. Including the, the, the fine from our EPO. So I want to make it the extra ten thousand AJ, making it the total of thirty thousand AJ. Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thanks for your assistance.
Now, APM, you're highly welcome. Now the stage is.
Okay, Nde won, just one second. Okay, fellow Biafrans, I hope I'm coming on. We know what today is. And two days ago, we celebrate our hero and heroines. Thank you all. And before I proceed. I want all of us to know the state we visit today, where we have in our town hall meeting. Please. If you can join me, if it is possible for you, please stand up wherever you are. We have what we call Orga Indiorga, master and master of all masters. Boss and boss of all boss. Sometimes in life, a lot of us challenge those that we are not capable of doing what they are doing. Or those, or whoever that is above us. That is why even the devil challenge God. That is why a lot of people don't know who is above them. People challenge who they are supposed to challenge. And before we proceed, we know we have our God Almighty, Chukoki Kabiama and the angels. And in human being capacity, we know we have those above us, all fingers are not equal. In our own time, in our own generation, in Biafran history. We know our record, we know our history. But our enemy trying to hide our history away from us, they trying to erase our history. Please, fellow Biafran, stand up while this honorable minister of information, please, can you play the video I sent to you? Then after that, I will proceed before my speech. Thank you. Honorable Minister of Information, play the second video. Thanks.
Is that all right? Now, we're going to get this word to the end. Is that all right? Now, make sure that this time you are moving, that you are moving in the right direction.
Another Savior.
Holy, 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 Adimekujuku. Another Savior.
Another Savior.
Holy, 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 Adimekujuku. Another Savior.
Thank you very much. We all know who this Orga Indiorga is. If you're a Biafran, if you don't know, ask question. Look closely, you will see where is stated Odumogu. This hero is called Orga Indeorga. Boss of bosses. If you're a Biafran and you from Odume State and you from any state, 40 states of Biafra, please be proud of being a Biafran and be proud that we have Orga Indeorga. Master of all masters, boss of all bosses. Please, you can now sit down. Thank you. Thank you, fellow Biafrans. We need to know our history. You are all welcome today, to today's town hall meeting. As we have recognized the boss of all bosses in Biafran, the great man, Odume Ojukwu, who opened our eyes, who set the record straight for us to know what freedom is all about. We appreciate him, we ever be grateful. We remember our leader, Mazin Nndikan, following his footsteps under the Orga Indeorga, under the master of masters. We also remember our prime minister, who is following the lead under the Orga Indeorga, under the master of all masters as far as Biafra history is concerned. You cannot erase it, it's not a rock and science. It don't matter what you do. And we also remember the heroes and heroines. All those we cannot mention their name as well. And we also remember you that is participating in today's program and our fellow Biafrans. And I receive some list of our Biafrans that are locked up in the Nigerian terrorist country of which we are working to secure their release. We remember all of them. And if you from especially Odume State of Orga Indeorga, State of Master of Masters. If you don't make some noise, if you don't let your voice be heard, we'll ask you questions. We'll ask you, are you not proud to come from Odume State? Are you not proud of the general of all generals? Didn't he make you proud? In the Odume, Biafrans are asking this question. A man who's told so that against our enemy, so they won't kill us all. If the master of all masters apart, apart from Chukwokabi Amandie, if he did not open our eyes to educate us, to let us fight for our freedom by now, our land would have been Fulanized, Islamized. He could have chased us all out. The European empire of all evil, they have proportion, a portion for themselves. That is our resources. They want to take our resources and let the Fulanis, the Nigerian terrorists, have the land. My fellow citizens of Odume. I asked this question yesterday during our recognition and diplomacy fundraising. I asked this question. If they chase you from Odume State, Kerebe Gaga, where will you go? If these Fulani and the Nigerian terrorists succeed, chase us out of Biafra land, my people, where will you go? Going to Abazonia, those are the, Abazonia people will not let you. They don't have enough land, they don't have enough space for themselves. Will you be running from Benito Lagos? They will hurt you with passion now. Talk less of them. They will treat you worse than slave. Will you be running to Middle Belt? From where go on from, the same go on that kill over 5 million Biafrans? Where will you go? We are grateful to Orga Indeorga, the undisputable leader of Biafra. We salute him, we appreciate him, we thank him. We appreciate those that are doing what we are not able to do, that encourage them to do more. We don't want to drag those that are fighting for us, contributing immensely. We don't want to drag them down. Our people said, my fellow people of Odume State, I want you all to be proud of Odume. I want you all to be proud of the history. They have tried everything to erase our history, but we will resurrect it. If our history allowed to be uncovered, we will teach our children, our grand grandchildren about Odume State. Why this state is named Odume? And who is that Odume? Orga Indeorga, boss of all bosses, Ikemba One. As of today, sorry to disappoint my fellow citizens of Odume State. He, he is not Ikemba One of Unewi anymore. He is Ikemba One of Biafra land. Sorry, if you keep saying Ikemba One of Unewi from today, you are making mistake. He is Orga Indeorga, masters of all masters, boss of all bosses. Ikemba One of Biafra land. Whether you like it or you don't like it, that is your own cup of tea. We appreciate his sacrifice, we appreciate him. We still celebrating our hero, our heroines, it's not over yet. Our leader Mazin Nndikan, thank you for all you're doing. Few days ago, you won at the court and the proceeding is still ongoing. Our prime minister, under the Orga Indeorga, is still making history. The first prime minister of Biafra Republic government in Azam that ever been in the EU court to answer question about Biafra, to talk about Biafra, to deliver, to take that message to the world. The same EU that have been running from talking about Biafra. Now they will be talking about Biafra even tomorrow and will we prevail? Biafra must win. Biafra must not surrender. My fellow citizens, there is not going back. Those are the Guanazu. There is no road with going back, no way. We are moving forward, we are marching forward. Even during the genocide, civil war that Nigerian terrorist enemy country waged against us, with the little we have, our armies are still marching joyfully, singing joyous song. How we still win? Biafrans did not surrender to Nigeria. No victory, no victory. What happened is because of the blockade, because of shit rain being stopped every day. We will not surrender our land, will not surrender anything to this evil empire called Nigeria, to EU. You know, EU should be ashamed of themselves. For real, they, they should be ashamed of themselves. Their evil will catch upon, upon them. Why they are trying to stop us? Russia will, from the other way, try to deal with them. What goes around comes around. Thank you, my fellow Biafrans. If you haven't know who you are, ask question. If you haven't know who you are, go to your family, call your children, ask question. 140 years ago, what are we called? 150 years ago, what are we called? Who are we as a people? Who is Eric? Who is God? How do we get here? Where are we from? Who is our God? What is our way of life? Do your research to know who you are. If you are not doing that, you're making a very, very big mistake. And if you're not supporting the freedom of your people, let me ask you this question. What will you gain? If you allow your people to be killed, massacred, raped, chased out of their land, what will you benefit or profit from doing that? Our leader Mazin Nndikan, after our Lord Jesus Christ and His station, because I'm a Christian, so I always talk about our Lord Jesus Christ, sorry if you're not a Christian, but in Biafra land, Christianity is allowed, so let me do that. After our Lord Jesus Christ's station, in Biafra history, when you talk about teaching, is our leader Mazin Nndikan. Just the same way we have Orga Indeorga, that have stood in forefront and fought battle. You will see him with his uniform, he do everything humanly possible to make it work. He even uses Father's sweat. Why some of us today, why we say we do this financially, we contributed, we say we use our money? Some Biafrans don't like to hear that, some are angry about it. Sorry if you offended, if you offended by that, kindly bring your own. We'll wash your plate for you, we'll do everything for you, we worship you, respect you for us to get our freedom. We applaud you, we even kneel down for you, even kiss your ass if that's what you want. Please appreciate those that are making sacrifice for us. Appreciate them from the bottom of your heart, just the same way we appreciate Orga Indeorga, the Ikemba One of Biafra land. And we also appreciate our great teacher of Biafra land Mazin Nndikan. We have, we have a great teacher who exposed the Nigerian atrocity to the whole world and the entire Biafra. We have now his undisputable, the great teacher, exposé of Biafra land. And what about our prime minister? Our prime minister is one that spend hours and hours every day exposing the Nigerian evil art, analyzing everything that is happening in Nigeria. A lot of Biafrans today that have came in to join this struggle. Do you know why? Let me whisper to your ear, is because of the exposition of our prime minister. His exposition that he spent 2-3 hours every day, educate a lot of Biafrans to the extent that any day, he did not come online to broadcast. Biafrans keep asking question, if he's okay or not. Till now, I bunde chilling Tike that we can hear. Till now, are we deaf? After everything we have been taught, the lesson of the war and we saw how Biafrans are killed and massacred, we did not learn for what happened there? Our leader Mazin Nndikan, preach, 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 and he said, he is tired of preaching. And it's time for action. Our prime minister exposed the Nigerian terrorist state Obara Hotho for years. Are we deaf and dumb, my people? There is no kind of preaching, are we preaching that our leader Mazin Nndikan will have not? He is under the Orga Indeorga undisputed. There is no kind of exposition, expose. I'm going to expose from social media using what is happening in Nigeria, analyzing it to the public, that our prime minister have not done. He's still in the, under the Orga Indeorga. These three great leaders are undisputable for now. And for those that are financially supporting, you are undisputable as well. And those that are doing everything they can in their own capacity, you are swell on your own level undisputable, under the Orga Indeorga, under the masters. And for our angels that is protecting Biafra land, all of you are still under masters of all masters and undisputable. We appreciate you, the admins, the reps, the de facto government and the brigadi are still under the Orga Indeorga, under the boss of all boss. All of you are still undisputable. But don't quote me wrong, when I say undisputable, I'm talking about the genuine subkwan disa. The good ones are the undisputable. The good ones are the one we celebrate 2 days ago. The hero, the heroines. The evil ones, we don't know who you are. The evil ones are in our black book. We don't open our black book, it's too dark that you can't even see what is inside. Put your name in the good book, so we celebrate you. So we'll put you in your rightful place. Our Chukwokikabi Amasay, uh, Onyewa, the one in heaven said, Jesus Christ said at my right hand side, right? Be in the right side of Biafran history, not in the dark side. Because it will be well with you to be in the dark side or in the black book. My fellow Biafrans, I don't know where to start and where to end. There's a lot to talk about, we can spend hours talking. Our leader Mazin Nndikan, the greatest teacher have done that. Our prime minister, the exposé of all exposition, have exposed and exposed the zoo. Is that not enough for us to wake up? Is that not enough for us to realize when our leader Mazin Nndikan said, the zoo terrorists, they are coming. They are all over our bushes, they are coming. The Fulanis are coming, they try to overrun and take over our land. How far, how is it today? Are they not in Biafra land? Are they not in Biafra land, my people? What is happening in Yehamufo today? Did the Yamufu just wake up one day and they decide to run out of their house? No. Why are they running out of their house? Because the terrorists, Fulani jihadis, bloodsucking demons, in the name of Islamization, are chasing our people out of their accessory land. If they don't run for their dear life, they would be hered, kill them, rape them, destroy their farms. And some of you, when with people like me, our leader Mazin Namdekanu, our Prime Minister, and the brigadi media, and the way meaningful Biafrans are speaking, preaching, you all be laughing at us. So share. Let's, the rest are sure, we will overcome. For all the mockery, assault that we have received, that will not stop what we are doing. Sometimes make us stronger, tougher, wiser. But this journey that we have embarked on, not going back. No matter of threat, no amount of threat, from the enemy camp, from the enemy within, from the EU, from any organization, body, country, will stop us. Because we Biafrans must be free as a people. We Biafrans must protect our children, our mothers, our land. Whoa. This journey might be tough and rough. It is tough. It is rough. But are we going to give up? Can never. Our leader Mazin Namdekanu was kidnapped from Kenya for over four years now. He did not give up. He's still fighting. Salute. Still fighting. Appearing in the court of our enemy with one fin, the called fin de cloth. He never said he quit like Ozrici. He's still fighting. Our Prime Minister Mazie Samunebu is called for so-called questioning. Since November, since Muthna. He never gave up. He never surrendered. There is one of our mother during the Biafran Nigerian war, the genocidal war. She was lamenting in that video that Biafran was a man as a nation. Biafran will never surrender. Thank you, Mommy. Thank you, man. We did not surrender. We not. My fellow Biafrans, it's time we know as a freedom fighting people, as people that are fighting for their survival, we must not be political correct. We must agree to disagree. And our language might not be as smooth, might not be like a normal government that have million, billion, trillions, that have over 1,000 armored tank, thousands of jet fighter, Marines and others. But we don't. We are angry. We are fighting like a lion. We'll fight with whatever we have and the way we speak. We speak and say, that is. We'll speak with the anger and the frustration of what our people going through. We have to voice it out. Can't be quiet. If you're offended by that, go do your research. Listen to those that have fought before us all over the world. Freedom fighters have the language, how they speak it. I don't know if this is familiar with you, my fellow citizens of Biafran and Odumegu. Your freedom is not given. When you remember that voice from Doug Shaw, Yoba? Is that with a normal voice or a loud voice? Your freedom is not given. Your freedom is taken. You take your freedom and you will liberate your land from neighborhood to neighborhood, village to village, town to town. We will fight. We will fight like never before. And remember, the country that we are liberating ourselves from is the most dangerous and worst country on earth, Nigeria. No country in the world want to do business with Nigeria. Whenever I'm in Washington, you talk about Nigeria, they will tell you how corrupt it is. I don't know if some of us Biafrans are familiar, but who say that Nigeria is fantastically corrupt? The dead man Bohari, the imposter, before, before he passed away to his rotting grave. In UK, when he visited another dead corrupt queen of England, Bohari said, while he was walking to take off from UK, they have a discussion. Uh, one of the, I don't know if it's the queen or one of somebody from one of the, from the parliament. They said Nigeria is corrupt and Bohari admitted. Actually, Bohari said Nigeria is fantastically corrupt. How I wish Honorable Minister of Information can actually play that short clip for us. For a president of a country to admit that the country he rule over, he govern is corrupt. Aaron Boy, Peter Obi, the useless man, Sogo, that are betray his people. Peter Obi made it clear that Nigeria breed criminals. United States of America don't breed criminals. Nigeria breed criminals. If you're not part of this freedom fighting, if you're not fighting to free your people, do you rather fight and work with a country that breed criminals? Do you want to work with a country that is fantastically corrupt? I have a conversation with one of our honorable from the homeland today. And he told me about how much he spend every day to swell his generator so he can have light, opua, light nepa. Nigeria have no electricity. Nigerian electricity cannot serve you for a whole full day. Sometimes the light they gave you is half current, can't even power a refrigerator. Is that a country you want to be proud of? Is that a country you still want to associate yourself with? Nigeria have no good road, no electricity, no good hospital, no good school system. Everything in Nigeria is a shithole. Do you remember a president that said Africa is a shithole? He's referring to Nigeria. During the hearing, when Nigeria, when during the hearing in Capitol Hill, the day they designate Nigeria as a country of particular concern or country that persecute Christians, one of the speaker there made it clear that he have visited Nigeria numerous or numbers of time. That Nigeria have the worst road, also worst road on earth. That Nigeria have the worst road on earth. And they call the country a giant of Africa. And for your one Nigeria, you should be ashamed of yourself. If you have traveled out of that country with a Nigerian green and white passport, you see how embarrassing, how shameful it is. People with the passport try to hide it. Because Nigeria is a strong country, a terrorist country. My fellow people of Odumegu, please, we need to remember Ogandioga. Remember his sacrifice, remember everything he have done for us. And the reason why he fought, so we should live, so we can live and let live. If you have not been supporting him and if you are a Biafran, let's make today occasion a memorable one. Let know that we visit the state of Ogandioga. Let know that he who show us the light is Ogandioga, the Ikemba One of Biafran. His Excellency Odumegu Ojukwu. We appreciate him. We appreciate his sacrifice and all of our sacrifice. Our Prime Minister this week, he will be appearing in court again. The hearings still continue. The good news is that we are winning. All our enemy we scatter, but at the end, Biafran will be free. And I also want to remind Biafrans, I have a lot of list of Biafrans that the Nigerian terrorists are holding. We are doing everything we can to get them out. And we also need to secure fund to release them. Please, we need your support. I'm not going to show you their list here, but it's a lot of them. So we're doing everything we can to make sure that our people free. But we are in the homeland today and the homeland thank you all for your supporting and what you all have been doing to support our angels, to be able to carry on the work of freeing our people so we can be a free nation. Please, my people of Odumegu, you're supposed to be proud of yourself. Celebrate today, celebrate him who made the state possible, Odumegu. Please, support, support, support. And for Biafrans all over the world, both in homeland, please, let's kindly support this great state of Odumegu. And remember, our freedom is not negotiable. As Obama said, Nigerian unity is not negotiable. Our freedom, Mr. Obama, you fail woefully. Our freedom is not negotiable. I always keep reminding America for the few parts of my broadcast, America, wake up. Stop sleeping. Time for game is over. As the leader of the free world, we love you all. Step up and do the right thing. United States of America that is led by His Excellency President J. Donald Trump, you know what to do. American Congress know what to do. We have led our campaign to them. Very soon, we'll be going a more diplomatically harsh way to wake them from their sleep. Because while they are sleeping, China is taking over part of Africa. Terrorists, they are advancing. We will not let that happen. America, step up and do the right thing and stop this your political correctness game. Step up, wake up. The leader of the free world, we call you upon you again. It's time you do the right thing. The leader of the free world, we know what Biafrans have gone through. If I will have shown some pictures, members of Congress that I have have visited with. Just let me just show one here. We have take our message to many of United States Congress, starting from here. It's a lot of pictures, but I'll just show three. This is Speaker of the House, still the current Speaker of the House. And we are appreciating, you know what is going on? Uh, Jimmy Jordan, Judiciary Committee. Cruz, Senator Cruz here. So please, it's a lot of meeting that we have met with our members of the US Congress and senators. So they know what is going on. So they cannot act like dumb and deaf and dumb, like they not don't know what is going on. Time for America to do what is right. Biafrans believe through America, our leader Mazin Namdekanu, that we believe. That means if you believe in what he said, he believed that America will deliver. His Excellency, our Prime Minister, also believe that America will deliver. Uh, let me just show like just two more picture, then I'll be wrapping up my speech, please. I met with our... If United States of America, if they say they don't know who we are, they are joking, they are lying. US, we call upon you all, you all know our story, our history. She is a former presidential candidate. And when we, when they invite us for our president in America here for his inauguration, Amy Glomisham actually has signature is in that invitation. And the former president as well, Cory Booker. Cory Booker told me that the evils are everywhere. They know our history. America, do the right thing. Step up, stop the game, do what is right. You all know Biafran's story. You all know Biafran people have been killed and massacred. But it's the right time to stop the political correctness game and do what is right as the leader of the free world. When I met with the Speaker of the House, the Speaker of the House made it clear. When US lead, the rest of the world will follow. So please, we don't want you all to turn your back on us. We believe you all will do the right thing. And my fellow Biafrans, while we are waiting for United States of America and other countries, not just America, to come and recognize us, we also need to fund what we are doing. We need money so we can use that AJ, Jimma, for our diplomatic war and the recognition. Recognition costs money because we have to pay our lobby. We have to pay those that are working, paving the way for us, negotiating so that we can get to this greatest high. Thank you, my fellow people of Biafran. Thanks for all you're doing. And thank you, my fellow citizens from Odumegu State, from the state of Ogandioga, from the state of the boss of our bosses, from the state of Ikemba One of Biafran, not Ndewe. So that Ndewe, we'll take that from there. He's Ikemba One of Biafran. Thank you all from here. Thank you, Ndewe.
Thank you very much, my APM. It's a wonderful speech you made there. Thank you, thank you, thank, thank, thank you very much. Please, more hand to support our APM speech. Let it run, let it run. Yeah, baby, New York, unmute yourself.
Biafrans, Ndewe.
Ndewe.
Ndewe, Odumegu. Ndewe. I thank you guys for hosting our APM. And I really like this speech from our APM. So I will take 30 AJ to support that speech, Ndewe. I will send my receipt to Information Minister to deliver to the appropriate person for me. I will send my receipt to Information Minister to deliver to the appropriate person for me. Ndewe.
Ndewe, Ndewe, thank you, thank you, thank you very much. Let it run, let it run. EN, unmute yourself. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank the APM for his speech and I want to thank him for all that he is doing for Biafrans. I have made a payment of 50 AJ. Thank you, APM.
Thank you, Ndewe.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. More hands, more hands, more hands. Let's support our APM in this wonderful speech. Yeah, Odubo P. Pro. Oh yeah.
Okay, I am supporting our Honorable APM with the sum of 20,000 AJ. Making it the total of 50 for me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ndewe.
Uh, Ma Tungwa, oh yeah. Do your thing, unmute yourself.
Okay. Odumegu, Ndewe Ode. Odumegu State, Ndewe Ode.
Yeah, well. Yes, 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 loud and clear, loud and clear.
Okay, okay. Uh. I greet you all, I thank you all for hosting our APM. Thank you all. Everybody, all day, I thank all day, don't know, and everybody I thank. I thank you all. This struggle was continuing. Please, I beg everybody, any amount, take, any amount is not, it's not a. It's not to be a long time, please, any amount. We need to continue our struggle. We need to, we need more funds. We need more funds. I will support this 10,000 AJ. I will forward my receipt to our. Uh, Director of my state, for my state. Thank you.
Ndewe.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Uh, no, because free state, free state, you can anyway.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, I'm from a, what is this, I'm sorry, I'm from a what is this.
Okay. Ndewe.
Yeah, thank you, Amaleka, for that information. You tried to get the information, thank you. Ikichuoya, over to you.
Okay, thank you, my brother. With that wasting time, I'm using. 20,000 AJ. Uh. To welcome our. Our APM for the speech. Also. I'm using 10,000 AJ. To welcome Mazzi Sunny Akbarawa to Odumegu State. Pastor Van 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 Ajere. I'm using 10,000 to welcome. Van 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 to Odumegu. My Dan Rika, I'm using 10,000 AJ. To appreciate her for all her job. Good job that she's doing in Odumegu State. Thank you and God bless. That is total of 50,000 AJ. The first 50,000 AJ has been paid. I'm going to prepare this one now. Thank you and God bless. I still remain Odumegu State Secretary.
Thank you, thank you very much, Ndewe.
Thank you, my APM Secretary. Thank you, you're doing a nice job, thank you. Mighty Dot. You are next, unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
All right, thank you, greetings all, greetings, APM. Greetings, Owo. Um, greetings all Biafrans that are here. Um. Yeah, Owo Sunny, what happened? I was hearing something about, they keep telling you welcome back, what really happened? Is everything okay? Is Sunny there?
Sunny, yeah, yeah, Sunny, that's a question for you. Yeah, Sunny Akbarawa, Sunny Akbarawa, that's a special question for you.
Anyway, um. Hello?
We can hear you, please.
We are hearing you, we are hearing you.
Um, when you, when you have time, you can respond, but. Um, yeah, thank you, Odumegu, Odumegu State, again, for doing the need for today. Um, I thank everyone that have contributed. Um, I wanted to say something. Many of us do not understand what is actually happening. Many Biafrans, 80% of Biafrans don't even understand the times that we are in. What this freedom is all about, the danger that we are in. They think it's all about Fulani. Fulani is a small piece of the puzzle. As I speak to you right now. European Union, Britain left European Union to, because of whatever. But for the fact that Britain wants to come back to Europe, have alliance with European Union after pulling out. They are planned, right now, they are having alliance to form a military, European Union military with Britain. These people are coming again to Africa for second time colonization. But this time around, it's going to be through brutal force. Because without Africa, they will beg for food on the streets of Europe. Africa has always been their survival. And they can never let that go without the fight. That is why many of us don't understand the magnitude of the shit that we are in. So Fulani is just a piece of the puzzle, a small piece. We have a great danger ahead of us. Apart from that, there is something coming that many of us do not even understand. And I would rather be in Biafra than to be in the United States of America when that thing start happening. I'm not going to say much. But if many of us understand the depth of the shit that we are in. What is coming, Biafra will be your best bet for what is coming. You are in Europe, you are in America, you are in Asia. The best place for you to be safe for what is coming is Biafra. Very soon, many of us will begin to see the manifestation of what I'm talking about. But today, I'm going to, since you are in Odumegu, the man. The man. That started this path, this journey. The Ikemba. I am going to call upon his spirit. I'm going to call upon his spirit. And I'm going to make this the grammar, I'm a goal for. If Finland. If European Union, all those countries in Europe. That have converged and gathered together to persecute one man that is fighting for the freedom of his people. If Finland and European Union, if they ever, if they did not fight. If they did not fight to free themselves from Russia, from their enemies, to get their freedom. Those countries, if they did not fight to free, if they didn't do what Mazzi Simon Epa did and what we are doing now. It will be well with them, whatever they do to Simon Epa. It will be well with them. But if they fought, if they fought Russia, a brutal fight to gain their freedom. And if he does the same thing that Simon Epa is doing. And they are persecuting him for that. I am going to send a message to Finland on my own. And I am calling the spirit of Odumegu Ojukwu. To go and fight for Simon Epa. They are persecuting his son in a foreign faraway land. For doing what he did when he was alive. Every soul that died because of Biafra. They will all converge to Europe. And European Union will face destruction. That is so magnitude that the world has never seen. You don't have to believe me. But something is going to happen soon. I'm going to support this today with 150,000 AJ. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mighty Dot.
Thank you very much. I know we are, we are, we are lying to this, you know. Uh, we shouldn't be too much emotional because, you know. Things are getting really, really, really scared. You know, you, you said it all. If we all, if we all, you know. Saying everything, I don't think this Tahoe meeting will end today. So, thank you very much. Let's just keep it, you know, short and simple. A minute, just do it, you know. Thank you, thank you very much. More hands, more hands, more hands. Uh, Sunny? Is Sunny still here? Sunny? You hear me?
Ahaha, pe nuwa tu bo bo lulu.
Ahwa tu digo.
Ahaha, ahaha, pe niye ligo.
Ahha, ye ligo.
Okwe wewu di kenwepudo.
Obo da ju loyi.
Pe niwe kan.
Iwe kan ku noye go.
Iwe kan.
Iwe kan ku noye go.
Iwe ma ma.
Iwe ma ma noye go.
Ado do 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 man. Ado do 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 man. Ado bu de bu de wa.
Bu de wa ma bu do.
Na asu buhe bu asu du nu ma. Ne kwe lu, ne kwe banke, me lu ngupu takajuto.
Mawalu moji.
Ya bu bu si li ke ri na.
Mawalu moji.
Ba no bu zinkaka e di alaya.
Mawalu moji.
Nu be bu gara malu bidu, malu bidu.
Mawalu moji.
Asino hala kataka ona gaziu.
Mawalu moji.
O nyu wa e mwe ni o ma u.
Mawalu moji.
O ya mu ma ra di le na na mulia.
Mawalu moji.
Ya nan ku to fiya bu wa ne.
Mawalu moji.
Alu fe bu de ne ka ona zaku.
Mawalu moji.
Ba na ja ra wa kenun.
Mawalu moji.
Uzuwa fiya i bu de ne no bu kon to.
Mawalu moji.
Eda mbavi na gasi yazu.
Mawalu moji.
Oga ni ruwa ro ma ka o nyu enko lofu bi.
Mawalu moji.
O nyu i gara bada o nyu ruwa bo.
Mawalu moji.
Ya ju ne ju e me me alu la lu e me ju kuwa.
Mawalu moji.
Odi onu e bu odi sa.
Mawalu moji.
Aba cha le ko ga fe lo du duke.
Mawalu moji.
Ofu ludika ka giwa ka lo.
Mawalu moji.
O nyu menwa fu toku kompo la fu.
Mawalu moji.
O nyu ya asino bu ma ka na doji.
Mawalu moji.
Eba ma ni fa fu no cha galu kuwa.
Mawalu moji.
Moji li onu le cha o we li le sa lo.
Mawalu moji.
Fu ne fi fe we la ba ni me galu kuwa.
Mawalu moji.
Onu e fu na lu no na ja i bu bu.
Mawalu moji.
Ma i ku ku bi o tu nyu no no bu me le.
Mawalu moji.
Ucho ba kon do je bu je ba ni ha wa.
Mawalu moji.
Ana so kon do je bu e ti ma u.
Mawalu moji.
Mbe mbe ngana ngana.
Mawalu moji.
Bu 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 la fe.
Mawalu moji.
Ba ne we la jo mu o, odi si a nyoko.
Mawalu moji.
Asu anu ka bu li dun ti e chi e.
Mawalu moji.
Isin e bu gi di o wa nko talapu.
Mawalu moji.
So wa ke na 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 wa ke du nu bi.
Mawalu moji.
Du nu bu lu na wa ke ne li nu de.
Mawalu moji.
Agakata bo ku lu ke je ma di ke.
Mawalu moji.
Adu kan pu ne do ni pe le me le.
Mawalu moji.
Ebi li tu cha na ru bu mo ju li ke.
Mawalu moji.
O po chi ndike di li ke.
Mawalu moji.
Nan ta chi obi ni ni bu je aga nu bu.
Mawalu moji.
Oga ni dakota bu ju na ma bu ba.
Mawalu moji.
So ku sa ru mi li o bu bu, ya ya la la.
Mawalu moji.
Oka na bu ito lu go.
Mawalu moji.
Olu bo bezi na ru.
Mawalu moji.
Kamalu ne de we fu wepudo.
Mawalu moji.
Bu fu nu ka ga leka ku ifo fu ni si.
Mawalu moji.
Ago wa lu no bu go ta na macho lo.
Mawalu moji.
Ore je li bo so so ti fo ji biwa.
Mawalu moji.
Ago oka ta bu nyu yo wa ni ne.
Mawalu moji.
Anya tonga nduru na ba ke de.
Mawalu moji.
Ajo na chula ka la ka ne.
Mawalu moji.
Si na bu ta fu je ve no ji ke.
Mawalu moji.
Owa kolu cha nyava ge ye bu ye.
Mawalu moji.
Mo li o bu ju nyana ya wele na ba.
Mawalu moji.
Na ya go to ne do ne nu.
Mawalu moji.
Asu ni fe na ju ju ra ju ti fe.
Mawalu moji.
De ba ma na re bu afi ma ka.
Mawalu moji.
Asin e bu kata ide oka fu bu nuwa.
Mawalu moji.
Ka fiya cha lu ilo na ya balaji.
Cha cha lu ilo.
Ebo si biwa de nu.
Cha cha lu ilo.
Si e bo si na we bu nu, osoku je alu bu.
Cha cha lu ilo.
Si epe nu benka bu la le na ba mu.
Cha cha lu ilo.
Ibe di che du ni ruwa mwe nu no bu.
Cha cha lu ilo.
Ado lo da lo nu na u di na ku ba liya.
Cha cha lu ilo.
Oku ko je je ko na po cha.
Cha cha lu ilo.
Anu wa ke ya ba nu no no lu.
Cha cha lu ilo.
Oka ku ko do na kata.
Cha cha lu ilo.
Ama nke wa ke na mu ye.
Cha cha lu ilo.
Ana ma ngo lo nu bu.
Cha cha lu ilo.
Ama fa ya mu ze ni ru.
Cha cha lu ilo.
O nyu nyama la du nu che nu che.
Cha cha lu ilo.
Ni e ma bu bu, nyu bu bu lu diya la.
Cha cha lu ilo.
One ma wa ba to bi nyu e ke.
Cha cha lu ilo.
Oya ka lu diya se ba ko nu wa na.
Cha cha lu ilo.
Da ju ju ana diya je nu ju le we.
Cha cha lu ilo.
Ko de na mbenge be lu ndaninu.
Cha cha lu ilo.
Omo ma tu be me ko du me bu ju ku ikemba ne we di ku ku abu du bu ni talu bu si.
Cha cha lu ilo.
Ne ga le ba nyanu ya ma.
Cha cha lu ilo.
Chi te ni ju ba no kuwa nu no mu me.
Cha cha lu ilo.
Ofu lu go du ma takobo.
Cha cha lu ilo.
Ya wo si arana ka na po ke je bu ye.
Cha cha lu ilo.
Oka na ya je bu si li bi teka.
Cha cha lu ilo. Ebo si li bi teka, cha cha lu ilo.
Esese pa ka na ru.
Cha cha lu ilo. Ebo si li bi teka, cha cha lu ilo.
Di bu nu na ba to diya lu be.
Cha cha lu ilo. Ebo si li bi teka, cha cha lu ilo.
Ebe ke ni ma ro nyene tu ga fa.
Cha cha lu ilo. Ebo si li bi teka, cha cha lu ilo.
Guo fe ka ma ro chi nka ta.
Cha cha lu ilo. Ebo si li bi teka, cha cha lu ilo.
Ebe na li liya ba no pu di be.
Cha cha lu ilo. Ebo si li bi teka, cha cha lu ilo.
Iko ulo ju go ba lu na kata di, cha cha lu ilo.
Ebo si.
Yeah, thank you very much, Sunny, for this. So, this is Ajoffia, Ajoffia Ndewe. One of. One of most strongest masquerades in Biafraland. Uh, more hands, more hands, more hands. Okay, Abigail. Oh yeah, you are next.
Thank you. Greetings to Odumegu State. Greetings, APM. Good evening from Texas. The entire honorable members. Good evening. Texas is supporting the Odomegu State with fifty AJMA today. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Neewir.
Thank you very much.
Neewir, why Abigail? Neewir.
More hands. Donation continues. Let it run, let it run, let it run. Yeah, Abigail, your hand is up again.
I want to know, yeah, I, I want to know who, I want to know who I'm going to send the receipts to.
Uh, you can send it to Adazion, Angaleka. Anyone, anyone, uh, you just choose.
All right.
There we go.
Thank you.
Okay, Pekki USA, not a salt. Mazze. MLK, yes, got it right. Oh yeah.
Yeah, Neewir, Neewir sir.
Neewir.
Neewir. I'm, I'm, I'm almost tempted to speak in English, but let me go back to English. I greet all the honorables and I greet my APM. I also salute our eternal leader and, um, and my, uh, General Effion, who is, who is the president of Biafra, who was the president of Biafra. I also remember our leader currently battling the Zoom. And I pray that the Almighty will continue to give him the resources he need, the wisdom that he needs and understanding, knowledge that he needs to overcome them. I also say the same prayer for Prime Minister, uh, Mazze Simon Eba, who is also going through his own persecution. And at this time, this is a time we all need to really gel and come together and make an impact. And in support of that, uh, coming together, I will, I am uh, welcoming APM, same time honoring people of Mayegu State with some of one hundred and fifty AJMA. Neewir. And I will send, I will send the receipt. There was, I will send the receipt to, uh, did, did, did you say, uh, to Adazion? Adazion, okay. Okay, that'll work. Okay. Neewir.
Neewir, thank, thank you very much, Emileka.
Neewir.
Uh, we are highly appreciated. Thank you.
Neewir.
More hands, more hands, more hands. Let us do our internal leader proud by doing the needful. Okay, Angaleka, Angaleka, your hand is up. Oh yeah.
Yeah, good evening everyone. I'm see here and we have one update. Mazze Chibogo is donating ten thousand AJ for today's fundraising. Neewir.
Neewir. Eh, whoa, Mazze Chibogo.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's keep it, let's keep it going. Keep it run. Eyes look at me. More hands, more hands, more hands. Mazze Sonny. Okay, 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 don't worry. IA Engineer Nani is up. Oh yeah, omit yourself.
Okay, Neewir. I'm good evening all. Sorry, I've been watching and had a very, very important call from somebody and a bit disorganized with what is going on with this fundraising as well. But as it is, I'm, I'm supporting with, I'm supporting PM, APM for being here and asking for fund for us to, um, push for, for the, um, recognition of Biafra. I'm supporting him both for the caller and being here with fifty AJMA. Neewir.
Neewir. Neewir, Neewir, Engineer Nani, thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Uh, somebody with Zoom user. Uh, omit yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear, loud and clear.
Oh. Odomegu, when?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Odomegu, when's when?
Yeah.
Galu no, Odomegu State. Animal Support Un with twenty thousand AJ. When, um, I support my APM, Woke Maramakawai, with ten thousand AJ for his wonderful speech. So, total of thirty thousand AJ. And the other Odomegu, here now, what uno, ni he woke, ye ri be, go, ngaji dere, Makambosin, de nu gu state, ti ga, hapta. Go nu biapa.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Um, thank you so much. Iniki.
Neewir. Neewir, they were jabba from Odomegu State, Neewir.
From Oha.
Um, uh, Okuma, okay, uh, you know we have to send the receipt.
Mm-mm.
Okay. Um,
Angaleka man.
Angaleka, Angaleka, oh yeah.
Oh, hiya. No, she's paying the money from her higher now.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
It's website.
Uh, I thought this, okay, website, okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, so we need only the receipt.
Yeah, so send the receipt, tell that through Adazion or Angaleka. Okay.
They are to Chinny. Then Chinny gamazi.
Yes, yes. I'm so worried. No problem, no problem.
Gunne.
Okay.
Neewir, Neewir, thank you.
There we go.
You're welcome.
You may not. More hands, more hands, more hands. Let's just make it sharp, sharp, so that APM can, can relax. He's getting, you know, in Europe, he's getting late and, uh, okay, uh, love God. Omit yourself, you're honest. Love God, oh yeah. My sister, over to you. Omit yourself. We are now here on the end of it. Omit, omit. Yeah, I think I've done that. She needs to omit herself. If she's not. So. Omit yourself, you know, we need every, every penny we can get. My sister, omit yourself.
Okay, uh, I think we can move on. We have one item number, we have number ten, right?
Yes, yes, yes.
Right.
There's, uh, you know, if there's any, it might be ten, but if there's, uh, um, there's more hands or, because we need every penny in this, uh, tonight, so if there's no more hand and, I don't know, next thing should be ten. So if, uh, I don't know, um, I will be closing remarks by our this. But if love God is, I don't know, what's happening? I've tried to. She have a problem with connection. Okay. This noise getting late, um. Mazze Sissioma.
Yeah, please tell Van 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 to co-host Mazze Sissioma, please.
Okay.
Okay, or you can, you can just give him mic, can give him mic. Yeah, Mazze Sissioma.
Yes. Thank you, Mo.
Please, before, before, before you take the closing remark, take the half first.
Yes, yes, wait, you know, we have a problem with love God, you know, to omit herself, I don't know, but Abigail's hand is up. If, uh, love God, if you can omit yourself, you do it, if not, Abigail will go, okay.
Okay, yeah, I just have another update from Texas family. His family is supporting Odomegu additional, with additional thirty-five AJMA. So, you will be getting a receipt of eighty-five AJMA from Texas family. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Love God, is it possible you omit yourself? I don't know. He's not going, okay, Sissioma, you can take over. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, our moderator, Mazze Effion. I appreciate everyone who have endeavored to participate in this town hall meeting. It is with great pleasure that we thank everyone in, in, that we thank everyone who has support in one way or the other for the progress of this town hall meeting. I know most of us have left one or two behind just to see that, uh, this, uh, event is a success. I appreciate our CLC Chairman in this town hall meeting has done so, so, so much well in trying to make sure that this event is a success. I appreciate, uh, every executive and committee member of Odomegu State, Bridge APM, Information Minister and his deputy, all the Bridge Cabinet members. I want to use this opportunity also and recognize and also appreciate our regional admin, administrators and Biafra entirely. We are so grateful having you all today. Me shukua kike Abiyama. Continue to guide, protect and bless, and bless you all in all your endeavors. You say, you say, you say, Neewir.
Yeah. Neewir. Neewir.
Neewir.
Neewir. Neewir.
My ass said, thank you very much, thank you very much. You're doing a very nice job. Uh, there was update, uh, love God, she was not able to omit herself, so I got in touch with her. She's, uh, giving fifty AJMA to support, to support this town hall meeting. So. Angaleka, jotting down.
From, yeah, love God, from his state.
Uh, from UK.
UK.
Okay.
Thank you, um, Mazze, do I have the mic? Before you take the closing prayers.
Yes, 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 you can have the mic and take the closing or closing prayer should be, let's hand over to Angaleka to that.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you so much, Mazze, thank you the admins of all United States of Biafra, four states and all the entire executives and all the reps and admins of BRGI. Our ministers in BRGI. Our APM. Our PM. Our leaders that have, um, been at the front before now. It came by one of Biafra. Our Supreme Leader and Wasri Ke and everyone that have paid the price. Even our Biafra Defense Forces in the homeland who are sacrificing on daily basis for Biafra to be fully liberated. Biafrans in the homeland, for all your sacrifices, we salute all of you. Yes, if you have seen that your state have not made a name in the homeland, then go back and play the puzzle well. and play the puzzle well. Go back and start your Ludo game. Because every state wants to be on the list. And if your state is not viable to be on the list, go and check where the problem is. We must, we must have every state back alive. So make your state viable, resuscitate your state from the sleep that it went into. Do not allow the coma to overcome your state. At least the spirit of awakening bring your state back. Watch and see how every other state are doing it in their town hall meeting. Emulate. I don't know how to speak too much grammar because the English is not my language. My language is the Biafra language, not the borrowed language of the imperialist. So, if it is mimic that the English people will call it as grammarian, take that one, even not to copy, use them. Even not to come and check and carry go, take them. But all we want is that every forty state of the United States of Biafra must be resuscitated and they have to become more viable than before. So that what you do in the homeland will be in good shape. So that as we call on you every day, you can answer your name and do it well. Please, we need to do more because Biafra is in the homeland. The recognition of Biafra is in Daspora. So, do well in the homeland so that you will be recognized in Daspora. Looking at your effort and your strength and your tenacity and the resistance that you put. If you don't do this, the recognition in Daspora will not be hesitant. So, the recognition in Daspora is dependent on your input in the homeland there. That is why you need to do more. Why we are doing more in the political and the diplomatic circle for the recognition. I salute all Biafrans and I congratulate all the admins and executives that have done so well. Please, do more. Because the time we are in demands that we do more, yes. When you look at the face of our Prime Minister, what is demanded from is, look, to Biafrans was, you have to do more, yes. You have to do more. Because there's something left at the corner which we have not touched yet. So let us understand the message and let us not take it for a joke. I salute everyone that made this event a memorable one. We will always come back to Odomegu State and we want to see more miracle happening in Odomegu. Thank you from here. Please, who is to take the closing prayer can go ahead, thank you.
Yeah, Angaleka, oh yeah.
Oh yeah, okay. Uh, please, I have one correction before the closing prayer. Wada Amaka Allison. She made a pledge of twenty thousand Ajama. Uh, but what she said was, uh, Ikemba State, so I'm reminding her that it's Odomegu State that is paying the money for, thank you. Yeah. Chukwokika Biamma. Oh, yeah, in the best log. Chinkena funi fena vudanzuzo. You see, in Kendo, obaranke tokudu non. Shumwobwenye. Nah, omogie we biana rurisha. When they would say, obakanya, this is the debate. Where's the canal to to na lake, can they, they no casten. Ni hi hi, who can keep me there, no boss in Keta. Emaila, emaila, shakola, ni fele niu. I was sicko, nan ki webe ko. Ekeneni ine. Ampunyaani ine, driginenu casten. When it's check one, all the cabinet members, our APM, our leader, Mazze Nande Kano, Prime Minister Nakage. Where's the vehicle, is it key, we, nah. Give a key, any, they, che tan, kunkwa, kipelo mogi. Nambe na de ganya, my guess is wrong. Namkwa, I can eat, che talaga. We could, you know, when Bia mezula, yeah. Ni enaya taga for too much, eh, bugani. Oh, maka ya taga for. I ina, was a quality. Man, he balay, he play a young person, no, no, but I get to pass a rubina, gee. You feel like a, hey, me. She make it, they gonna keep feeling Biafra mani. Eh, when I keep feeling Biafra, my, ni ina, to pass a ruby. Sitelain be, you make a. Sitelain be, you make a beko. Ndye bu nyani, eh, guy, eh, di well, wallo. Ni ine, go, we fe, jolo, asna, eh, go jolo. Nanki we, ay, money game, Melania. I went as soon night, eh, Bobo na has web ya. Eh, Bobo na has waiting, eh, go. She make, ke gamu zuri, eh, magic, rumagi. Ay, game with the Akonoba, informa, ganabialani. When I squacka, who won, no, but I do web ya here. Okay, you cook, cook, come away, nah, nachi, ganabi, eh, di chee chee. Nah, I took a kick, ah, Biamma, oh, yeah, money. He say, he say, he say.
He say. Thank you. Angaleka, come on, I don't know.
Profetas.
Profetas, profetas, Angaleka. Thank you very much, my dear sister, you did, uh, this is wonderful prayer. Thank you.
God bless our APM and God bless all the cabinets. Yes. Jerry and Co. Thank you.
I thank each and everyone. I thank you all for doing this. We work together and did everything.
Neewir, tomorrow.